Thank you.
We are live. This is pretty close to nine.
Okay, I'm recording. It's nine o'clock.
Okay. Madam Clerk, you're ready?
I am ready. Thank you.
All right. I'll call the meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance and then a moment of silence. I pledge allegiance to the flag. With the Republic which stands in the nation's liberty of this broad. Thank you very much. Roll call.
Yeah, before we do roll call, I want to clarify because there's been a clarification on the Open Meetings Act in terms of people remotely participating when commissioners, let me get that up. Wait. For now, if commissioners are participating remotely, when it comes to roll call, they have to identify where they are located physically. They can list their township or the village. So for example, Patricia, you could say you're from your home in Leland, or you can say you're from your home at the township of Leland and so forth. But that's a new requirement.
Commissioner one, Ms. Robbins.
Here.
Commissioner two, Deb Rushton, absent. Commissioner three, William Bonning, absent. Commissioner four, Ty Wessel.
Here.
Commissioner five, Patricia Sotus Little.
I'm here and I'm participating from my home in Lake Leland.
What township is that?
I'm sorry, Leland Township.
Commissioner six, Gwen Augwar. Commissioner seven, Linda Lautner.
Present from my home in Solon Township presently. I may be leaving. And a point of clarification, absent and excused please for Commissioner Bunnick, who had a conflict, and for Commissioner Rushton, who also had a conflict.
Okay, we can put them as prior notice, but there is no such thing as excuse under the Michigan Open Meetings Act. Neither are here, not here, but we can say that they notify us in advance of their absence.
Thank you. Okay. So we are hey, there's roll call. Down to public comment. We're going to have some.
No, you just go on YouTube and type in public comment. We don't give out the zoom information to the public. If you go on YouTube and go to Are you calling for public comment? Could you give out the number, please, the phone number? Okay, it is 256-8109. Okay, go ahead, sir.
Yes, my people, friends and colleagues.
Okay, could you please turn down your volume on your TV or your computer because there's a feedback.
Yes, thank you. Am I coming through okay?
Yes, yes, sure.
I was thinking, I was thanking you all for being there, but I saw the sound, you cannot make it.
Excuse me, could you please identify yourself, please?
Of course. Victor Goldsmith, Northport, Dean Atomchak. I have a couple comments. First was encouraging you. I love strategic planning. I've got a lecture in facilitary strategic planning. And that can be very productive and energetic. One essential point I found on in my experience is that there always is a benefit if there's a unified vision. And around them, under which all costs are progressing, over the unified vision, the outcomes can be exciting. I have three more key points that I want to share with you. One, reminding you that I, when I became a township trustee, I completed a course in Township Governance Academy. When I became involved with the planning commission related to zoning administrators, I got certified as a zoning administrator. So I sort of understand the public acts of our state. And so when I bring up, I would encourage every member of the county commissioners to look at the Public Act 156 of 1851, Public Act 156 of 1851. And what you will find there, section 4611, listing their powers. And you will see a lot of areas that ours, which are really necessary and important, can follow uniquely and depend on the county board of commissioners. However, when we go over there into our subset on the section of powers, there is a provision implied on how that will relate to the talk of townships. And that's something we should be sensitive. Where is the boundary? There goes the powers from the county to powers to the township. Over the years, I've also been very, about that, but it's important to clarify. And I would also encourage you, or if you, we have an anxiety for special initiative like Dark Sky, which I championed for over 10 years. The place to do that championing is the county board of commissioners. What I learned also in all those contacts with MSU elected office of training sessions was that we have to follow what is in the legislation in our MTL, Michigan County MNC, our Michigan County Board of laws. And one rule that is actually something that I tried to honor is that if it says shall, you, it's mandated. If it says language is issued, you can consider yes or no. But if it doesn't state it, it's not permissible. I repeat that. If, if a group says, let's, I want to have a factory in rocket engines. Well, maybe it's, it's in the zoning law or something that says rocket engines and factory probably can do it. But instead of something completely different, I want to not have a circus. It may not fit because there's nothing in the zoning laws allowing a circus. And I was a board commissioner. Their scope's well defined. And if you have not yet read the county board of commissioners, Public Act 156 of 1851, I implore you to do, to do that. Because to not follow that, if the public act even sits, there can be a suit against the organization. If it doesn't follow something, then it's mandatory. So I leave you with that. But I want to again encourage you, planning is exciting. It can be unifying. But without, for the power, and without, under the umbrella of a common vision, it can be very divisive. And I don't want to see enterprise satellites that belittle my county and belittle my board of commissioners. I want to see items in enterprise that commend the county board of commissioners and embrace in excitement. And without, I'm getting excited as well. So bless you all, guys. Go for it. Have fun. Laugh and play. Bye bye.
Thank you. The phone number for public comment is 231-256-8109.
I have a letter from a constituent that I'll read when all these are done.
Are you going for a public comment? Go ahead, sir.
Yes, my name is Steve McCauskey. I live in the village of Lake Leland. And I'd like to comment on the issue that's sort of over today with your goals and objectives. I believe that, and we encourage you not to take any more, on any more goals or establish any more goals beyond the goals and objectives that are called out in the MCL 46.11, county boards and commissions all. We want you to be the best commissioners and do the best job possible and provide us the least cost government. I've been attending county meetings for over 30 years, since 89, and township meetings likewise. From my reading of and understanding all the meetings I've attended, I believe that the county commissioners have their duties and responsibilities to perform according to 46.11, including the required administrative functions, the existing state mandated essential services, and act on matters that electors lawfully petition for, a rarity. Act on all things, understanding the principle of subsidiarity. Act on all things with a proper understanding of fiduciary duty. And every three years, prepare a zero-based budget or similar exercise. Commissioners are to perform all duties in a prudent manner, so much so that if each action that is taken, you feel so strongly about it, would put all the money necessary on the table before you vote, that you would finance it in totality. This does not include working on projects that are self-initiated or feel good, do good, or to fulfill pro-personal objectives, or imposing across-the-board tax synergies that only provide benefits for less than 100 of the 22,000 county residents, such as commission on aging and early childhood development. Imposing such harmful things on taxpayers have the appearance of acting under color of law. It does not include also interfering with other units of government, such as townships. This appears to have happened in recent years with Leland Township regarding fire rescue bike trails on the Tugmon Park. It does not include establishing other boards and commissions to assist to work on nominal issues. And that's half those boards and commissions establish many more subcommittees to collect meeting stipends and correct mileage revenue. So we respectfully request commissioners, be the best you can be by properly, truly and honestly serving the people of Leland County and to work with your administrator with the proper accountability standards so that he can assist you to conduct the county affairs accordingly. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCauskey.
Yeah, bye bye.
If there's any more calls, it's 231-256-8109.
Okay. Well, I don't hear more calls.
I have a letter from a constituent, as I mentioned. Okay, can I read that now? Dear Ms. Algeier, as a former elected official in Brighton, Michigan, I know how important it is to have goals. I do have a story to share with you about that. After sitting on council for a couple of years and going through goal setting meetings two times, it occurred to me that the council was setting goals based on current issues, usually as a result of past decisions. I thought that we could never move forward doing so, doing that, so why are we not setting goals from a vision of the future? As a facilitator for visioning World Cafe sessions, I suggested that we invite our constituents to find out what our residents and business owners envision for our community over a 10-year period. Initially, there was pushback in doing this, but eventually the council did approve this action. It was a very successful visioning session. I, along with a person from city staff, extrapolated all the information gleaned from the session and wrote a vision. We sorted out the statements made at the session, created a list based on which board, commission, service organization, or school board could act on those suggestions. We then presented each entity with the overall vision and their list of actions toward that vision. This all happened in 2011 when municipalities, counties, and townships were dealing with the financial crisis of 2008. Result was that the council, as well as other entities, when making a decision, consulted the list to see if that decision, they could move the vision of the people forward to fruition. By 2014, much of that list was realized, even though it was a 10-year vision. A vision for the future based on constituents' feedback took the polarized views of the council members out of the equation and propelled our city forward into the future. Thanks for reading my story. Claudia Robley in Maple City.
We have a caller here on the telephone. Okay, ma'am, go ahead and please identify yourself.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is Ellen Fudd. I'm a resident of Cedar. And I wanted to call in and encourage you to establish goals with the board. I think it's extremely important and a unifying activity of the board to come up with issues that you can agree on and that you can agree on setting your sights to for the next year. I think we can all agree that we want in this county clean water. We can agree that we want to help our businesses come back from the pandemic. I think we can all agree that we want our citizens to be safe and that we should be following health care advisories about mask wearing and we can assist and show leadership in that regard. I also want to point out that this board unanimously passed the anti-racist resolution last August in response to Mr. Eggerly's statement. And I think it's extremely important that it recognize that all seven members of this board made concrete commitments to work on the issues that were laid out in that resolution. That was, that was a unified, nonpartisan resolution that has concrete goals. And I think this board owes it to the citizens who look to them and saw their leadership in this regard. And, and when this board committed to making those commitments and following through those commitments. So I strongly encourage the board to take up those issues that, that this county needs for you to focus on for the next year. It will help us provide a measure for whether you are accomplishing those goals at the end of the year. We can look back and see what goals were set and see what steps were taken. I think again that it's unifying, as the earlier caller said. It helps us understand what the board is going to do this next year and helps the citizens participate and get involved and stay involved. So I strongly encourage you to make goals today, to discuss them, to figure out what things this county needs, and to set, set those tasks down so that we all know what this board is focusing on. I'd like you for your time.
Thank you. If there's more public comment, the number is 231-256-8109.
Question for the chair, please. Commissioner Lautner, would you be willing to get on the screen so that we could see? I'm having a hard time tracking without being able to see the chair. I'm not sure that, this is part of the issue I'm talking about. We're not communicating. I don't know if you see me. I don't know if you hear me. We're here to do important business and I'm asking the chair a question. Would you be willing to, to be live on screen so that we could have our conversation and do our work?
I'm following you well. Thank you, Ty. Not at this point. There's a lot of movement. I think movement is very destructive. So for your benefit, I'm following you very well. But for your benefit and for the confusion, it's best if my screen is black.
We do have a lady at public comment here. Okay, ma'am, go ahead and please identify yourself.
Good morning. This is Lois Bailey from the village of Sutton Bay. I'm calling with my suggestions on goals that have been counted before. I seem to be looking behind. We need to develop a model systemic inspection ordinance for the county. This has been repeated since 1994. It's kind of a deal. We are, I sit on the Housing Action Committee, so workforce housing is in front of my line, all this hard, particularly rentals. We have a task doing a great job of building, freestanding owner-occupied homes, but that doesn't attack the huge need of 600 units in the county itself. We need to figure out how to continue this work with the Housing Action Committee, exploring actual locations for larger developments and where's where the land bank and housing dark would be very important in that effort. We need to take some effort in mitigating climate change. Science is telling us, coming at us, and to lead it to somebody else to handle does not seem to mean like a responsible action. We can concentrate on energy conservation. We can even set an example on the campus by putting in a solar panel array. We should have a EV charge point. If you listen to the Cherryland Electric and Consumers Energy, they're both stated that we should be electrifying everything and working towards this clean energy, the future that's coming at us. So, thank you for listening and have a good morning. Bye bye.
Thank you. Once again, the phone number for public comment is 231-256-8109.
Okay. Well, I don't, I don't hear anymore, so I guess we can move on for the reason for the meeting today.
Chairman Loeb.
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes.
Okay. I'm recommending, I don't feel comfortable with this right now. We do have goals here. We're missing two commissioners. And plus, they're not here to represent their district. I know this meeting was placed in advance. But in hindsight, it would have been nice if some dates were given to get back with the rest of commissioners. I mean, we have one commissioner that's out on medical today. We got one who had emergency. We have one commissioner that should be at the doctor's office right now. And I think they did ask the other day for this meeting to be canceled. And I don't feel comfortable with it. I mean, all, I'm all for the goals. I'm ready for this meeting. Next Tuesday, we're all together, all seven of us. And I look at what Chet put together. I mean, we're pretty, we're pretty close. We don't need to sit here and argue all day today about goals. We have it right here. And then these are our goals. And I'm not going to bat for the other side because they're not here. Well, I am, but I would do the same for you. I would do the same for Patricia. She had a weird disease with her husband who's been sick. I'd do the same for you, Ty, you, Gwen. So I think in all fairness, we need to cancel this meeting today and take it up Tuesday night when all seven of us are here.
Yes, thank you. Patricia? Did you have a comment or you just? You're muted.
I didn't, but I will. And I can appreciate, Rick, your comments. It is true, my husband is now ill. He's just come through major surgery and is in the hospital. And I'm here this morning to participate and will be leaving for the hospital immediately after this meeting because it was important. Usually, we don't give out a variety of dates. I, I agree with you. Perhaps it would have been better if we had. But I felt this was important, so I've made every effort to be here this morning. And I'm sorry that the other two commissioners were unable to do that. And that, you know, Commissioner Lautner has things going on in the background where she can't participate as she perhaps normally would. So if the rest of the group is amenable to moving this to the executive committee meeting, I think we can. However, I will say that looking at the goals and what everyone has submitted, this looks pretty straightforward. And this meeting does not mean that it couldn't be discussed at the executive committee meeting. I think we could do this quickly and efficiently, making comments that we can then carry forward to the executive committee meeting and ultimately to the regular meeting where it would be voted on. So this meeting is a committee of the whole and decisions aren't being made. It was just an opportunity to discuss. So since we're here, I prefer to go forward, but if, if the majority wants to move weight for some reason to, to the executive committee, then I'll certainly go along with that.
Gwen?
I appreciate what you're saying too. I think we were notified yesterday that there was a problem. And we don't have time to reschedule. I think the reason we were doing this is because we didn't want to have a nine-hour meeting on Tuesday. If we can take 40, 45 minutes and come to some basic agreement that we can then take to the meeting, we're here. We're not making final decisions here, but we can hash out, you know, something to take to the executive meeting on Tuesday. We can do something constructive for the next 45 minutes or so. So I was in favor of just doing that. And I'm sorry the others couldn't be here. So we could make a agreement.
Ty?
Yes, I am. I, we're now at February 3rd, so we're 1/12 of the way done through our year. I, I don't have a problem with not doing it today. But we've been trying to get an agenda together to talk about goals. The people that are absent today were also the people that voted no about having any goals. I would, I would support establishing a, a, a different date for a committee of the whole meeting. But our agenda for next Tuesday's executive council meeting is very long. And I don't believe we can give due justice to our, our goal setting if we place goals at the end of our long, long agenda next Tuesday and then make decisions. So if we're going to dismiss today, I would favor scheduling a special meeting that everybody agrees to, that everybody can meet with, and we do the work that, that we need to do.
Rick, is your hand up? Yes, go ahead.
Yes.
Then I have.
The issue I have, it's not an issue, take that back, is you've been on the board a long time. Everybody's been on board, other than Gwen and I. And like I said, right back in January, why weren't these goals set back in October? We wouldn't be here if you would have did your job back in October, all of you. I don't want to sit, I told you more than once. I don't want to sit here until April figuring out goals. We have them here, and I want to have a meeting where all seven of us are here and we can all agree on them. So I mean, don't, don't blame anybody but yourself. You guys should have been doing this back in October.
Okay, thank you, Rick. Well, my comments are, I think that's kind of an unfair statement tied to me that pointing out that two that voted no on goals aren't here today. They have conflicts that were not, could not be avoided. As I said, I myself, I am off-screen because I have a back injury and I, I'm moving around. I'm standing. And that's very, very, it's very distracting to you. It's unfair to you. I, to be going now to get my, some sort of help with that. I think Rick's brought up some very valid points and, and I, well, I think everyone has. And, and, but I think out of fairness for the rest of the commissioners, that we can wait on this. We've got something to study. We've got something to study. And to back up a little bit, you know, the point Rick made, say, well, two that voted no aren't here. Well, the three that are pushing the goals set this meeting without asking any other commissioners. And Patricia, you are wrong. We, I can't remember a time we ever just set a meeting without asking either the whole board, if we're all sitting there at the time, or having Chet call and say, hey, I've got these three dates. What works out best, and where can we get the most commissioners? We've always done that, and for just three to pick a random date without asking the rest of the commissioners if it works, I had to scramble to reset my schedule to work today as it is. And then, and then was injured last weekend through my own fault. So I think it would, out of respect for the other commissioners that would like to weigh in, I think it would be fair to do either a date that works out for everyone fine or at executive. That's fine. I heard somebody say that, you know, this meeting is so important. If it is so important to our entire board, we ought to, I think it would only be fair to make it work so that all of the commissioners could still be there. We have to remember, many of us are still working, too. So while we do try to scramble our schedules, we do have jobs. We are working, and that weighs in. A lot of what Chet has put together needs some discussion because it took, we all have different ideas of how to get to done on these things. And there are some words in there that I think we're going to have to wordsmith to make it work that we're, that can get that 7-0 vote or darn close to it. So today, I'm not going to support these as they are. I don't have the input from my other commissioners I would like. We, and I don't know why we're discussing these goals that we already have on our plate and we've already started projects for, such as the septic, such as the affordable housing, such as the broadband and the tower. And the only new one here I see is the vaccine distribution. And I think that everybody is on board with that. I can't imagine anyone who is not. So I, out of concern, and I want to say, I'm very disappointed. We asked for a cancellation when it became very clear that this date was not going to work. We asked for a cancellation of the meeting, and the three of you would not cancel the meeting. And which brings us to today. And with only five, I really don't see any, anything valuable coming out of today's meeting. I think it is very important that all, all seven be here when we discuss this. Ricky, you've got a great point. I say it simple. We can continue on with the goals we set last year, those projects we began, and move forward. So that is my comment. We're not being as productive as we should be.
Commissioner Lotner, can you see my hand?
Yes, go ahead.
I'd love to, you know what, Rick, the reason they didn't do the goals in the fall was they were meeting for us. I heard them set, the other commissioners saying in the fall it wouldn't be fair to set goals without the new commissioners. So they were being nice, being polite to us. But I am going to propose that in addition to these goals, we plan, I think your idea of joining involves a good one, that we plan next year to start doing goals in maybe September. And I was also going to suggest that, we've done this in the past, the planning commission has. It's been a few years. And I believe Grand Traverse County did it, do a survey with people. What my constituents' suggestion was a visioning session, and those are wonderful in non-COVID days. But a survey could be done fairly simply. It was done with LIFT, too, wasn't it, Patricia? To get what our constituents' vision for the future of our county is. What are their needs? What do they need and want in our county? So I would ask that we consider that, do a survey, and then start on goals next year. But in the meantime, we need goals for this year. And I think we're pretty set on what they are. I don't really care if we, if we all commit to the time we need next Tuesday as long as we commit to it and don't do short-stripped.
Patricia?
Yes, thank you. You are correct that usually dates are confirmed, and this one was. Up until yesterday, it was my understanding that everybody could participate in this meeting, which was my point. So if I misrepresented it, my apologies. I think I'm hearing that everybody wants to wait, and I think that's fine. So let's go ahead and just pick this up and make it a super-long meeting next Tuesday and have our executive meeting move the goals to there so we can discuss this. But I also think I hear Commissioner Lotner, you saying that these appear to be the same goals. So I would suggest that, you know, those of us who can bring some specificity. For instance, on the broadband, since LIFT committee met and others who would be involved, there are some very specific new approaches that would be useful to try and to expand high-speed internet. We certainly are all getting enough emails on that and requests for help in terms of anything we can do to expand it. So there are some ways we can specifically that we talked about. So I will put those together and bring those so that we have some specificity as to new projects within an effort that we've been trying to accomplish for the last several years. So that might be helpful in our discussion.
Thank you. Ty?
Yes, thank you. I think we're close on the listing of four or five goals. But what I'm hopeful that we can do, and I think it takes considerable time to do that in discussion and compromise, is some specificity on the scope of the goals, the timeline for the goals, the necessary actions. And I think, I think we need to have a special meeting that we focus just on goals. And I would ask my colleagues, if we're going to dismiss today, to agree that we set a date in the executive committee meeting next week for a meeting just on goals for some future date in February.
Thank you. Rick?
Thanks, Ty, because that's what I was just going to follow up on. I'm not against, you know, I want to have this meeting, but I want to have all seven here. And I don't want to drag it out any longer either. So if we all agree on it, I think, you know, Chet's office ought to come up with some dates, get with all seven of us, and hopefully they all work, or one of them works. And hopefully it's by the end of the month here, because we're into February, and let's have our meeting. And like Ty said, you know, when you look at these, we're close. We just need to find two of them. And we can move on and start working on these rules. So that's what I'm recommending, is that we not even have next Tuesday at the executive meeting. So we're not overgrown at that. And come up with a date here by the end of the month, it's 21st. And we have this workshop, and all seven of us show up and come to terms on some goals and start moving forward.
Do you have a comment? Yeah. This is on the board agenda Tuesday, so you have a choice either discussing it or just picking a date. It's up to you, because it is on the agenda. Since this is a committee meeting, it is on the agenda for next Tuesday. So you will have dialogue. How you wish to proceed is up to the seven of you. You can either have a discussion on the goals, or you can simply decide to pick a date for a special meeting. So that's up to the seven of you to decide.
Discuss.
I guess with all seven of us here next Tuesday,
Let's look at it.
Come up with that date.
Okay. Very good. Okay.
Just one more thing, Commissioner Robinson, Commissioner Lotner. In the past, prior to COVID, we normally had an orientation session in the month of December for the new commissioners because the election is November. We didn't do it this year, obviously with COVID and so forth, everything else going on. But in the past, at least, and I think Mr. Russell and Mrs. Lotner will remember, we had our orientation meetings in December, and we started the process of goals in December. So by January, at least, we had an idea. We didn't have the final goals, because it was just a learning session. But we usually talked about those, and commissioners gave their ideas. And that list was compiled and put on the January agenda. So that way, the new commissioners could participate as well. That's why we usually did it in December.
No, thanks. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Well, if we have consensus to discuss this Tuesday, I guess we'll move down to public comment. We'll wait a few moments to see if there's any public comment.
Let me repeat that number. It's 231-256-8109. 231-256-8109.
Gwen?
Hi, good to hear you. I'm a public commentator. Hi, ma'am. I'm Richard Orsman, North Portina Township. I'm still encouraged. Don't despair. Keep on going. But I also encourage you, encourage us, to look at things like these. The Capital Improvement Plan, which is in place. Maybe that can also give its fodder for things that should be time-tabled. The General Plan, which is reviewed every five years, and it's your plan, our plan. And that, many of the things that I've heard are in there. That will give the leverage for moving them up into priority. And definitely, we all must look and read the public act on the powers and duties of the county board of commissioners, not only for this session, but for all sets of all times. I found that essential when I was in for the planning commission. We would go astray, and I'd refresh myself into the public act and say, whoops, no, we should not be going that way. So I encourage you, keep on going. And remember, without a vision, the boats will never get to destination. It's like not having a rotor. So have a vision, energizing and exciting. And if you are stuck in that, I'd be delighted to help you out. Have a good day, and blessings on all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Victor. Hey, while we're waiting.
Yeah, let me repeat that number one more time. It's 231-256-8109. The phone is ringing right now.
Okay.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hi, this is Dana Getzinger of North Portina Township. I just wanted to thank the commissioners that came today to do their job. I really appreciate them being here. I especially wanted to thank you to Patricia Guzzo, who's husband, is at Monson right now. And I'm sure she would rather be there, but she thought her job as a commissioner was more important. So I thank you commissioners who take your job seriously, and I hope you stop cutting things off and actually get things done. Because delaying tactics is a tactic to make sure no goal is that. So I really want to promote you to actually make goals. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any commissioner comments while we wait? Linda, I do. Go ahead.
I thought at first, when Commissioner Bunnick said he would bring a resolution that supported the Great Barrington Declaration approach to herd vaccination, that he was simply unaware of the fact that the declaration had been debunked widely based on science and best medical practice. I was extremely disappointed yesterday to see that, and very concerned, that this resolution supporting the Great Barrington Declaration is on our February executive meeting agenda. I would have hoped that, having heard the facts, he might have pulled that off realizing that it had been discredited. Now, I know some professionals have signed on the declaration, but many thousand more are against it, declaring that the herd immunity approach discussed in the declaration is dangerous and leading to a loss of life unnecessarily. And in Lelandau County, where we have 40% of our population over the age of 60, it potentially could have an even greater impact on loss of life. This is a health issue, and as such, it falls under the responsibilities of the Benzy-Lelandau District Health Department, who are charged with protecting and promoting the health of Lelandau residents. The World Health Organization, the Center for CDC, the majority of our experts on disease control, along with our state and local health boards, have made statements indicating that the Barrington approach would be irresponsible and dangerous. I support the efforts of our Benzy-Lelandau Health Department and their approach to herd immunity through vaccination. Until we achieve herd immunity through sufficient vaccinations, I support continuing the simple, effective measures of wearing a mask, washing hands, social distancing, and absolutely do not support a Great Barrington Declaration approach. To spend time discussing this discredited declaration while denigrating discussion of 2021 goals just seems like we're placing the emphasis on the wrong priorities.
Thank you. Are there any other commissioner comments? Ty?
Yes, thank you. I'm hopeful that we can have some discussion on the goals next week and set another time. And I would urge that we set a special meeting if we need one. If we don't finish our business next week, that we do it as soon as possible in February, certainly before the board meeting the following week. Thank you.
Thank you. Gwen?
I would, I concur with Commissioner Sotis little that I think it is a discredit to our county to consider the Great Barrington Resolution. It is a danger to our people, and it is not the purview of the county commission. Health matters belong with our health department. We need to give them all the support that we can. Discrediting their efforts is counter to our mission, I believe. And I would hope that that will be pulled from our agenda. I do believe it's a waste of our time. On the other hand, we may make national news for the wrong reason.
I see no other commissioner comments. The motion to adjourn.
Oh, no.
Okay, for all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed?